All right, today is Monday, May 17th, 2021. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we are going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ms. Garcia, could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Tara Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Michelle Portis.
Here.
Councilmember John Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Judy Hughes. Councilmember Arthur Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Johnny Mendoza.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, we are going to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. At this time, we'll go ahead and have our call to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak at this time? If you are joining us virtually, if you would like to speak at this time, please go ahead and raise your hand. Can you please check the attendees for me? I can't switch over to that tab.
Madam Mayor, this is Triton. There are no members of the public with questions at this time.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We'll go ahead and close call to the public. There will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. We are going to go ahead this evening and take our agenda just a little bit out of order. I would like us to start with our youth that are enlisting in the military. We'll begin with a proclamation declaring Florence's pride in those who have enlisted in the military, and to urge all citizens to continue to support our military service personnel and the family of those who are serving in our armed forces. Counsel, as the proclamation is being read and after all the youth come up, please come and join us. This is a proclamation supporting Florence's youth enlisting in the armed forces. Whereas men and women join the military in part because of the benefits the military offers, but more importantly, they join the military to put their lives on the line so the rest of us might live a safer, freer, more just world. Whereas Sarah Lamb, James Windsor, Jonas Thornley, Braden Hewitt, and Iliana Mullins have demonstrated their courage and their commitment to freedom by enlisting in the armed forces. Each will take an oath to support and to defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, both foreign and domestic, and is ready to stand and defend our great country with honor, courage, and commitment so that we may all enjoy the freedom that's afforded to us. And whereas our military personnel defend us in a time of peace, times of war, and times of crisis, both natural and man-made, and render the highest service any American can offer and is a guardian of freedom and the American way of life. And whereas we are profoundly grateful for this sacrifice that they have chosen to offer, each of us, and because of their heroism, we're able to sleep soundly at night, knowing that they are valiantly guarding our freedom. Whereas we must also remain committed to support our men and women who have grown up in our community. They are a part of our communal family in order to ensure that they have what they need in order to complete their missions wherever they are. We must also commit to support the families they leave behind and to support them when they return home. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Tara Walter, by virtue and authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim Florence's pride in those who have enlisted and urge all citizens to support our military service personnel and family of those who are serving in our armed forces. I'm going to call our youth up in a moment, but first I'm going to have Principal Haugen. Would you please come up? I'd like him to say a few words. He is so very proud of our youth that have enlisted. And after he speaks, we're going to have the youth come up, and I'm going to give each of you an opportunity to speak as well. Your families, your community, we're all here to support you.
Mayor Walter, thank you. Councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And members of the community, thank you. Again, as Tara Walter had just shared, we are extremely proud of the Florence High School seniors who are choosing to enlist. They have done a great service while they have been in high school with us, and we know that they're going to make our community and our nation proud as they go out and serve. So thank you very much for the work that you're about to do and the work that you've done for Florence High School. Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd first like to call up Ms. Sarah Lamb. Thank you, young lady, for your enlisting. Next, I would like to call up Mr. James Windsor. I understand he is not here this evening. We'll have Mr. Haugen give him his proclamation. Next, we have Jonas Thornley.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. And I'd also like to thank the town of Florence for inviting all of us. And I'd also like to say that I'm very excited. So that's it.
Next, we have Braden Hewitt. Braden is actually going to be shipping out on May 31st, very soon after graduation.
I'm Braden Hewitt. Thank you guys for coming out. I appreciate the support that you've shown us. Thank you.
Our other youth could not join us this evening. However, our last youth was Iliana Mullins. And again, we will ensure that Principal Haugen brings them their proclamations. Counsel, would you like to come on down so we can greet these young ladies and gentlemen? Now, this evening, we are going to, again, just go a little bit out of the order of the agenda because we want to honor a very special employee who continually goes above and beyond and who has served the town of Florence for 25 years. For 25 years, Dan Cisco has given his heart, his soul, and he has worked effortlessly. I have with us Chris Salas and Brent Billingsley. At this time, they want to share some stories about Dan prior to us presenting him with an award.
Dan, if you'd come on up. I want to be the first to congratulate you on the 25 years of not only service, but exemplary service to the town of Florence. You are a model employee, and you know that, not only in the Public Works Department, but amongst all the departments. You're the guy that everyone depends on when they get in a tough spot and they need help and know that you'll be expeditious about providing that help and that you'll provide utmost quality in that work. You're one of the finest employees that I've ever had the opportunity to work with and one of the finest people that I've ever gotten to know. And I just want to share my appreciation from the administration perspective, but I think it goes without saying, the appreciation of the entire town, its residents, and its employees for 25 years of exemplary service to this town. And I want to thank you again for your commitment, loyalty, and excellent customer service, both internally and externally. Thank you very much, Dan.
Don't expect much from Dan to speak tonight. So I'm going to try to fill in some of the words for him. We spoke this morning about his 25 years, and we're going to kind of gloss over the first 20 years. I can only speak from my experience in the last five years with Dan. When I first got here, he was being just promoted to Public Works Superintendent, which we didn't have that formal designation before. Obviously, when Brett came here, he created that designation, and it has changed our Public Works Department as a whole, the Streets Department. Dan's leadership, his commitment, just all the way around, has changed the culture within Public Works, specifically for the Streets Department, but for all the branches of Public Works. I think what Brett said is it covers so many areas. But I also want to take a second to sit there and acknowledge that beyond Dan's commitment to this town, I admire him for, just again, the human being that he is, his military background, serving this country, and even through divisive times, through the most recent of times, in the last four to five years, regardless, Dan has maintained being an American first, regardless of all of the distractions. I also admire that about him. Daily conversations from all different facets. Again, I admire him for being a great father, raising the children. I can only assume being a great husband, though I don't know this to be the case. Just all the way around, what a great human being Dan is. And I am very lucky and better for getting to know Dan Cisco. So I appreciate your hard work every single day, except for Fridays. Dan is a 410 employee, so inside joke there.
I'd just like to thank the council and the mayor for recognizing my 25 years. I thank Brett and Chris for the kind words. I've had a great experience here at the town of Florence, 25 years. I'd say I'm most proud probably the last five years. Chris came on board, and we accomplished an awful lot in the Streets Department, which made me very proud. Because we've got, compared to what we did 20 years before that, these last five years have been pretty amazing to me. Chris has helped me along, taught me a lot, project management. Have a great crew. Streets Department crew is the best it's ever been. They all care about the town, and they're a bunch of talented guys. That's about it. And I got five more years to do, and looking forward to it. Thank you, guys.
I want to present you with this amazing award. It doesn't quite... She's like five years. But thank you so very much.
Appreciate it.
Would your lovely wife like to join us? Because honestly, right behind, you're right behind supporting him, so come on up. All right, our next agenda item is the presentation on Arizona Department of Transportation's five-year plan. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and call forward our town manager, Mr. Brent Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's with great pleasure to bring the district engineer and assistant district engineer of our district with ADOT, Mr. Rod Lane and Mr. Doug Moszaki. A couple council meetings ago, if you will recall, council requested that we ask ADOT to come out and talk to you about the upcoming five-year program as well as cooperative projects in the Florence area between the town of Florence, Pinell County, and ADOT. They've put together a short presentation this evening that I think that you'll really enjoy. With that, Rod.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. It's been quite a while since we've been out to talk to a town council, so it's very nice. So with that, it's been a while, so we're not used to it like we have been. So if we make a little flub, we sincerely apologize and thank you for your patience. So my name is Rod Lane. I'm the district engineer for ADOT South Central District. I've brought with me Mr. Doug Moszaki. He's the assistant district engineer for the South Central District that works with the northern part of our district up here. So in our agenda, we're going to talk about several things. We'll talk about, you know, what the district is, where it is, where our district boundaries are, because they have been modified over the last few years. We'll talk about some of our, let's see if I can hit the button. There we go. One of those "thank you for your patience" moments. We'll talk about some of the upcoming projects that we have going on in the area, the SR-79 Bridge Project, the 287 and 79B Roundabouts, the 287 pavement preservation, our five-year tentative plan that's out for public review, and the North-South Corridor. Now, let's talk about the South Central District boundaries. So we are a pretty significant district in the center of southern Arizona, thus South Central. We've got five interstate, or excuse me, three interstates, I-19, I-10, and I-8. A significant rural portion to our district, four international boundaries, two of them in Nogales, five councils of government like MAG and PAG and those types of organizations, and portions of five tribal nations. So one of the things I did want to point out to you is that up in the northern part of the district, on SR-79, we used to go, our district used to go all the way up to US-60. And we had a section of US-60, about a two or three mile section. We've since moved that down, probably about three or four years ago, to mile post 138. So it's slightly north of your town boundaries now, just on the other side of the canal. So we do encompass the entire town of Florence, but we don't go up to US-60 anymore. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Moszaki, who's going to get into the project details, because he's the one that really works down here in that area.
Thank you, Rod. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to talk for a few minutes about a few of the exciting projects that South Central has going on in your area. The first one that I really wanted to mention is a very unique project. It's the replacement of the bridge over the Gila River on SR-79. It's just a little over a 1,400-foot-long bridge that we're actually going to do as a construction management and risk project, which means we've hired a designer that's a ECOM and a contractor that's FNF Construction. During the planning stages, we were expecting to have months of long detours while this work was being done. As we got into the design stages, we anticipated the need to do a full two-week closure of SR-79 while they demoed and replaced the bridge. But with having the contractor on board, I'm going to show you a quick video here in a minute that they have been able to come up with some phasing with an alternative bridge construction method, actually slide the bridge from either side into place. So we're looking to start this in early '22, and it's going to take a year and a year and a half to complete. And we'll see if I can get the video to work for you guys. It's basically, this runs through the six phases of construction. And so as we start the project, they'll come in under Phase 1, put in the access roads on either side of the bridge so that they can get their equipment down and across the Gila. Then they're going to construct the piers and the infrastructure for the new bridge on the outside of the existing bridge, so the traffic will continue on 79. Once that's constructed, they'll move traffic out onto the new bridge, demo the old bridge in Phase 2, and then they'll move into Phase 3, which, over a weekend, will push traffic onto one side, and there'll be a signal on either end, so it'll be one-way traffic the whole time. So there will be, it'll be delays, but it will be functional. And so over one weekend, we'll slide the bridge, one side of the bridge into place. Another weekend, we'll slide the other side of the bridge into place. And then as we move into Phases 4, 5, and 6, we'll finish the closure port to connect the two halves of the bridge. We'll add the sidewalk along the west side of the bridge and just do some minor cleanup then to have it fully functional. So you'll see some delays, but you won't end up with really long detours, which we're very excited about. At the same time that we are looking at the bridge over the 79, we're going to try and continue to look with the city. There are advances, apologies. We're going to continue to look at the signal at Hunt Highway as well. We're working with Brent and his team in the city to try to be able to fund the improvements up at Hunt Highway as well. The next project is on the south side of Florence, which is the SR-287, 79B Roundabouts. We have Kimmy Horn on board as a designer, and it's going to be a traditional design, bid, and build project. We're expecting to start that the summer of '22. This project is actually funded entirely through the Maricopa Association of Governments, so it won't actually appear on the ADOT five-year plan. And when we get to the finished product, this is basically the conceptual layout of what those two intersections will look like as the project wraps up. Finally, just recently, we were notified that we, the district, received seven different pavement preservation projects as part of the CARES Act, one of the COVID relief funds. So we are in the process of determining the designer for those projects, but one of them is the SR-287 between the 87 and the 79B. So that will have pavement rehabilitation that will occur. We're expecting fiscal year '23. We're hoping to actually accelerate that a little bit if we can. With that, I'll, oh, I have one more slide, my apologies. Wanted to make sure everyone knew how to be able to keep informed with ADOT projects. You can go to our website at azdot.gov, and in the upper right-hand corner, you can subscribe for updates. So you can go in and identify if you want specific state routes or areas to be able to get the public notifications. As they're released, they'll be emailed directly to you. So it's very easy to stay in touch and up to speed on the projects that are occurring in your area. With that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Lane.
Thank you. So now we're going to be discussing ADOT's tentative program. So the tentative plan is put out annually and renewed every year. It's a five-year plan that gets updated every year. So this one is currently in the process of being reviewed right now with public meetings and such, and it's expected to be modified by the State Transportation Board, and they will have an approved program by June so that can be in place by the beginning of the fiscal year of July 1st. So I break this up. This is a little bit different than what you would see on the program. I make it a little bit more hopefully digestible for everyone. So we're going to go to the interstates, and then the projects that are kind of more appropriate for this area, and then work our way down. And the last column over there is the actual page number in the program, so that if you want... want to get into some more detail and get into the, dive right into it, that'll get you right to the page. You don't have to try and find it so much on the plan. So a lot of the projects on I-10 in the area, again, this is just the South Central District that we're looking at here. So the expansion projects, which are the E, the blue Es, are mainly down in Pima County. The big one, of course, is I-10, I-10 at Ruth Roff in fiscal year '22 for $170 million. There's two down on the bottom down there. They're in the design and the right-of-way section, so you don't see any money in there for construction. You'll just see right of way, they're way out in the plan, further out in the plan. The other ones are modernization and pavement preservation projects and bridge rehab projects to try and keep our system functioning. There are some climbing lanes that are being added down on the Benson area in milepost 303-ish to 303 and a half. That's also in the program down there. So now we can look at, I'm going to switch buttons here. Up in this area, in the Penal County area, you'll see a lot of modernization and preservation projects in this area specifically. There's the Gila River Bridge that Doug talked about on top. Lots of intersection improvements and deck rehabs and some rumble strips on 287. Like I said, intersection programs or intersection projects, 287, two of them, one at 87, from at Kenworth, and one at 87 from 87, which is the one that Doug just talked about, that pavement rehab. And then SR 387, I-10 to SR 87 pavement rehab, and the left-turn lanes on the bottom down there. And then if we go down to I-8, there's nothing on I-8 in the five-year program, but there is some projects on I-19 that are coming up, a deck rehab down in Nogales, way down on Western Avenue, another pavement preservation or pavement rehab project on I-19 in Tucson, replacement of our traffic interchange in Tucson Irvington, and another pavement rehab on I-19 down in there. And then we're getting out into Pima County with a couple of projects on 77, two more on 86. That bottom one is a wildlife linkage project being funded by PAG that we're going to administer, much like the roundabouts where it's funded by MAG, but we're going to administer them. And then Santa Cruz County, SR 82, and then several more projects down in Cochise County with some bridge replacements, some pavement rehabs and such. And then we can talk about the north-south corridor study. So that, when we're expecting an environmental impact statement and a record of decision this summer. So if the build option is selected, we'll go to the Tier 2 phase of it. This is the record of decision, and the environmental impact is the completion of the Tier 1. We will then, depending on the results of the Tier 1, go into Tier 2. There's currently no funding for the Tier 2, but we're considering all funding options to move the proposed north corridor forward and, you know, preparing to build the alternative as it's determined. So that's it for our presentation. At this point, if you folks have any questions, or Madam Mayor, members of the council have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
First, I'd like to say thank you to both of you for coming here this evening, as well as for the presentation. Second, I really appreciate the transparency and openness that you've had, because prior to COVID, there were multiple open houses where citizens were able to come and look at the plans, as well as council staff. Since those open houses, has anybody reached out and provided any other questions or any concerns that you're aware of?
On these projects, not that I'm aware of. Doug, are you aware of anything?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Excellent. And I also wanted to point out, because one of the slides that I think was glossed over just a little bit, but it's such a big investment that makes such an impact in our community, especially when we're talking about infrastructure, is the total of $22,936,000. Because as the slide showed, you know, prior, there was $2,682,000. In the 2021 fiscal year, $254,000. And then in the fiscal year '22, $20 million. And while most of that is ADOT, there's also a portion that's covered by MAG, and we just want to say thank you for that partnership and for contributing to our community.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions or any comments? Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, I have a question about the traffic light where Hunt Highway intersects into 79. We've been trying to get that traffic light in for several years. It keeps being delayed. We were told because of the bridge, and this is about a fourth mile north of the bridge. I don't know why we can't get that traffic light.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Anderson, members of the board, we recognize that as an issue, and we've been, as a district, pushing very hard to try and get that included as part of the bridge project. We're having trouble getting, securing funding for it and moving forward. That's our last hurdle. We've been working quite closely with the town manager and trying to move that forward as best we can, and that's our goal as well.
Thank you.
Do you have an estimated cost of that project in front of you?
Of which project?
For the Hunt Highway and 79 traffic light?
Do we have an estimated cost for that, Doug? I don't think we do at this time.
Okay.
We'll be happy to get that to you.
Excellent. And perhaps that can be another opportunity for us to communicate with MAG and see if they're able to assist as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
I was just wondering if you could enlighten me on the thought process of why, when the bridge is being redone, it's going to still remain just a two-lane. Based on the video, it looked like it was going to be two lanes instead of expanding to four lanes, which I'm all about being ahead of the curve instead of behind it. And at Penal Partnership, listened to David Cook talk about being ahead and how Penal County is striving to be ahead. And so when we're going to keep a two-lane road that we're completely redoing, a two-lane road, to me, that's not being ahead of the curve, that's falling behind.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm going to ask Doug to answer that. I think I know the answer, but Doug, the bridge appears to be pretty wide, so.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Cortez, you're correct. It is a two-lane. What's out there right now is two-lane with a very narrow shoulder. What, based on the traffic volumes, we, you know, we calculate out to, you know, the build-out year, which right now, I believe, is 245, and look at the traffic volumes to determine the number of lanes required. And so this, it has a 12-foot lane in each direction, but then it also has a wider shoulder. So it's a safer, it'll be a safer bridge to drive across. If something should happen, you'd be able to pull off onto the side shoulder and be able to get out of the trafficway. But right now, the traffic modeling shows that, you know, the volumes are not there to add additional two lanes in each direction, or one lane in each direction, pardon me.
I guess I'd just be, how much more volume do you need to put on that road to justify it to be put into a four-lane? Because the issue that I envision is that everything but the bridge is going to expand to four lanes, and then we're going to have a bottleneck going across the bridge. Because as you come off the bridge, it's one, it's still two-lane, but everybody just naturally starts to separate. And when they get to the light, once you go through the light, then it turns into two lanes by McDonald's. And so it's like, everybody wants it. Everybody just naturally wants it. And I get the safety issue, but there's, to me, there's plenty of space for that bridge to be expanded. And I just hate for us in 10 years to be sitting here talking about, oh, now we've got to expand it to four lanes and spend even more money. And so to me, it's just crazy, but that's just my personal opinion, so.
Madam Mayor, council members, I would like to remind you that we do design our all our structures to the anticipated traffic volumes of 2045. So we expect it, and it's designed to maintain and manage traffic up to that year. And we do that in cooperation with all the planning in the area. So, thank you.
No, thank you. And I understand what you're saying. And again, this is your field of expertise. You do this all across the state and using the same calculations. And when you have expansions and you're not ready for it, with those expansions, you're also going to end up having additional money in infrastructure and upkeep that's going to take away from down the road, actually having that money set aside to build it.
That's true. And, you know, there's other points that I think need to be taken into consideration here, and that's what is the evolution of traffic going to be in the next 20, 30 years? With electronic vehicles, there's, in the traffic world, there's a topic or a subject at headway, which is the spacing between vehicles. So the question is always, how are we going to gain efficiency in the traffic world over the next 25, 30, 40 years? Is it going to be just adding more volume, or is it going to be putting more cars closer together and more vehicles closer together as they communicate electronically? All of those are all points that are just, we don't know. It's future. So that's why we do it to a certain travel, a certain time plan, the 2045 time plan, to give us that time to adjust. So, thank you. Hopefully that helps a little bit.
Absolutely. And I'm glad to see the expansion for the pedestrian and the bike lane, so that way we can keep our citizens safe that are also moving in that modality.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Our next presentation this evening is presentation of the new operations model for the Florence Fitness Center, Mr. Hezekiah Allen. While you're making your way up, I just, I want to say thank you for everything you've done for our fitness center since you've been here. I've actually had the opportunity to join with my family and have been frequenting.
Awesome.
Honestly, I'm impressed. I'm impressed with the little sneaker that goes through, that you can access the facility 24/7 with a swipe. There's cameras monitoring by dispatch. It's amazing.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Hezekiah, with the Community Services Department, and, you know, it really, big kudos to Megan Seda and Ally for the work they've done on this project. It's outstanding. Police Department for the work they've done, like you stated, they're monitoring the cameras at night to make sure if anybody has any issues, they can respond. To our Facilities Department that have tirelessly worked on that facility to get it ready. You know, just for the public's awareness, although we were close to the public, there was still a lot of work going on to get ready for this process. And then I had one more. IT, obviously, IT, the scanners to get into the doors. If you're not aware, Trent was working on that project himself and working hard to make sure we can get that facility open. We had some issues with the door swipe and the doors not connecting. He made it happen, so big kudos to him. And just thank you to the admin team, and most importantly, thank you to council for letting us pursue this project. You know, one of the reasons we went after this project is because during the height of the pandemic, we were being given standards that, based on percent positive, we could open up to a 25% max occupancy rate. And so staff, we were getting together and talking about, how could we open up and still serve our guests, the clients, our citizens with this facility that's smaller to begin with at 25%? And that's where the idea came up of, well, let's pursue the 24/7 option. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce the brains of the operation. Megan, you made it happen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm coming to talk to you a little bit about the fitness center and how far it's come over the years. Our facility is small, so we've made the best of it, and we've opened it more hours for our public. Our community is, we have our prison guards, and we have just multiple different type of people here that will access the facility at any given time. So we've heard people that want the community, or the fitness center 24/7, so we've looked into it and trying to figure out how to do it. And we've gotten numerous compliments, and our members are just so happy to be back in our facility. Our facility is very close-knit. Anybody that walks through the facility, doesn't matter if you know how to use the machines, or if you're intimidated by the gym, just the overall feel of walking into our facility, it feels like your family. And that's our goal when you come into the facility, is to make you feel like you belong. So I have a short video that I put together that I'd like to show you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Megan, you guys have done an amazing job. I'm so thankful, and our community is as well. The new machines that you guys have brought onboard, and something that's unique that I don't know if everybody in our community knows or not, is it used to be a bank. So you can actually say, oh, I went and worked out in the bank vault today. And it's a true story.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, just a few things to round this presentation out. Currently, we're at 241 members. To put that in perspective, typically, the fitness center would average 83 to 84 members annually, so we're at 241. That brings in roughly $4,366 monthly, providing each member stays with us throughout the year. So just some numbers there for you. So thank you, Council, again, for allowing us to pursue this option, and to the admin team.
Thank you. Our next presentation is an update on the kiosks and the wayfinding sign program. At this time, we'll call up Mr. Larry Harmer.
That's interesting. That's not the way it looks on my screen. Things a little bit out of kilter. Mayor, Council, good evening. Please be able to bring this to you this evening. I know this is projects that the council has talked about in the past and are anxious to move forward with. Like so many businesses out there, the town has been impacted by the whole COVID issues last year. Things got kind of shuffled. Plus, even today, community development staff has been shorthanded for this entire fiscal year. So there's been some difficulties moving forward. However, putting the redevelopment plan to bed, as you helped us with just recently, has allowed me to get back into this project. Also, we have a staff team that in one way or another have been involved with these discussions and looking at how we're going to move forward with this program. Jennifer Evans has been Bitter, Elon, and more recently, of course, Keith, our new community development director, have all been involved with this program. What I want to, let's see, which one do I want to do here? It's not advancing. Turning it on might have something to do with that. First of all, just a brief reminder on what these individual programs are, and then the update that goes with it. Kiosk signs are those signs that we see that are vehiculately oriented, that are out in the public rights of way. Many communities around the valley have those, as well as within Penal County. Commonly, it advertises specific builders and specific developments. And of course, to date, we've pretty much had only Anthem at Merrill Ranch to advertise, although now with LGI Homes and more interest in some of the abandoned subdivisions in and around the downtown, we're going to have an expanded listing of builders that we'll be able to place on these signs. However, this is back when these were niched. However, this is back when these were initiated back around the late 90s, when this type of program started showing up. In the early 2000s, around oh six, oh seven into about 2010, many of these programs started advertising local businesses also, business name specific. And so that is something else that we took into consideration. There's no cost to the town on kiosk signs. They would generate revenue, a limited amount of revenue. It would require review by the town engineer for right-of-way permits for their placement so that there's no interference with utilities, with site visibility, intersection, things of that nature. And what we did, since there's no cost to the town, we just kind of put out a query to the two companies that are already doing business like this in Penale County. We received this kind of a submittal from each one that outlined how they would approach doing these within the town limits. Motivational Systems, Inc. actually provided what we think as a group was the most beneficial to the town overall. And basically, this is just kind of a summary of how they package their contracts when they go out and start soliciting business. And typical things in there, you know, with the potential of rent increases and things of that nature, they move forward, but all reflected, you know, as a very minimal percentage, should that even occur. More importantly, to the town, to builders, and actually, this is a lower number than I've used to. I've actually done these programs elsewhere and normally they run around $90 to $100 a panel. So them offering these up as $75 a panel to builders and only 65 to retail is a kind of a cost savings or cost benefit to our local businesses. And this is one of the reasons why we favored MSI. To the town, we'd be looking at a monthly revenue, $20 for builder, 15 for retail panels. And the production fee is how much it costs the individual builder or retailer to actually get their sign put up there to begin with. And the way this would work is, and this is a sample of how they would approach it. It's steel construction. There was this program previously inside the town limits, but they used wooden posts. And they were subject to dry rot and termites and did not survive very well. They're harder to maintain. And so going to the steel construction is going to be a lot easier to maintain. Also, the town does not have to maintain these. The company themselves would maintain them, change the panels as needed, et cetera. The town will get at least one panel on every six-plex kiosk sign to point to historic downtown, to point to library or high school, depending on which kiosk location that we'd be looking at. This is kind of a sample of how they saw their distribution of panels, at least initially. Eventually, we could see more panels, for example, as development occurs north on Felix Road up around Mesquite Trails and some other development potentials further to the north. We may see it some more areas along there or Arizona farms where they might be desirable. Those will be handled by, on a case-by-case basis as they come forward. And again, these are, this is a program that does not cost the town anything other than our time in going through and reviewing and approving these and issuing the permit for their right-of-way. The downtown core area wayfinding signs, which is a completely different animal. These are to be more pedestrian oriented. There'll be some vehicular oriented signage placed in the public right-of-way or the pedestrian ones also be in the right-of-way. Or we also are going to have to work with ADOT on the wayfinding specifically because of the Butte and Main Street South or both Business 79 and come under ADOT's jurisdiction. We do have the contact and their right-of-way division to talk to them about putting these in. They actually have standards for wayfinding signs that we will be following as far as getting them permitted in those areas. And then if it's on, for example, Butte, west of Main Street, that's our jurisdiction. Or up and down Main Street, north of Butte, is within the town's jurisdiction. So those will be a little bit simpler. And these are really to direct users to business types. Because the town owns these and the town will be constructing them rather than naming specific businesses, you'd be calling out business types, restaurants in this direction, retail in that direction, government facilities, different things. We, you know, have a little bit of flexibility in how we do those. The town has budgeted in the CIP for this current fiscal year, which we're not going to be able to expend, but it's proposed to roll over into next fiscal and we'll be able to, I think, get this totally spent by the end of the year, by the end of the calendar year, or maybe even by the end of the first quarter of the fiscal coming up. Again, does not generate any revenue for the town and it requires review by the town engineer prior to any installation. We've actually have a request for proposals out on the street for businesses who do this kind of work. So far, I've had three specific inquiries. So we are at this point expecting at least three proposals to come in. They're due on the 27th, which is a week from this Thursday. The group that I mentioned earlier will have an opportunity to review those and they'll be coming back in front of you as an RCA for word of contract. Final sign locations for the wayfinding will be determined during the course of the designs process itself. And the council, of course, HDAC, and we want to include the Chamber of Commerce and some of the downtown businesses in the discussion about where they should go and how they should be looked, how they would look and be designed. And this is one of those goals, objectives that was identified in the recently adopted redevelopment plan also. So we are going to be fulfilling one of those right up front. These are some samples that I pulled out and I was very specific in which ones I chose, mainly because I designed two of them and did the projects. On the right and the left, those are in downtown Buckeye. And the reason I pulled those up specifically is the one on the left where it says historic Buckeye is, you've noticed, it's a three-sided. That's one of the vehicular oriented ones that you would have at an intersection. And they're a little bit larger panels. It sits a little taller, more, you know, bold, if you will, in its presentation. But also what makes it very interesting is that is not set in the ground on a footer. Those are on metal skids that are covered with decomposed granite so that they can be moved should we have the need to move them for any reason. For example, we might have one down around the intersection of 287 and 79 Business where it comes into town, down somewhere in that area. But when the roundabout construction begins, takes place, it can be relocated. It could be potentially placed in one of the circles. I haven't thrown that out on the floor yet. But somewhere in that vicinity so that these can be easily relocated with a forklift. The one on the far right, those are in the right-of-way within the walking core of downtown Buckeye, or in our case, downtown Florence. And those are set for, obviously, pure pedestrian use. Because again, they're a little bit smaller signage, but it does direct you again to different types of venues. If you've noticed either one of those, you know, the historic downtown, retail dining, town services, things like that. And it kind of gives you an orientation of where you might want to go in and around your downtown core area. The one that Mesa uses, they use it exclusively for their own purposes. Civic organizations with the museum, the visitor center, the art center, the convention center. You notice there's no business types listed on those and that's something that we want to make sure that we encourage on our downtown wayfinding signage. And then the other one is on downtown portion of San Diego, something very similar where they direct you to major attractions and things of that nature. I think in our case here in Buckeye, Buckeye, excuse me, I'm really wrapped up on that project. I'm very proud of it. We think it looks great. One of the reasons why is a lot of recycled materials on there. We actually have, one of the buildings that we had bought was an old cotton gin. And if you notice the corrugated metal backing on all of those signs, were all recycled out of that old cotton gin when we had to dismantle it. Among other things, there's a lot of recycled materials in there. And we'll be encouraging that type of a presentation for Florence also. Something has a rustic look. That's why HDAC will be involved because we definitely want their input throughout the process itself. That's kind of it in a nutshell. We wanted to make sure that you knew that this was moving forward. The kiosk sign, basically after tonight, tomorrow, I'll be basically notifying MSI and tell them to start, go ahead and start marketing the kiosk signs and getting them in for permit, right-of-way permit for installation. So they can move with that almost immediately. And then, like I said, the wayfinding signage, the bid opening or the proposals are due a week from Thursday at 2:00 in the clerk's office. You happy to address any questions?
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I was just going to say that I'm so happy that you guys are actually moving forward with this. I know it's been years and years worth of conversation. Been on the ad hoc committee, we talked about this extensively. So I just want to say how happy I am to see this actually come to fruition. And I look forward to seeing the proposed plans for the downtown wayfinding signs especially.
And on the ad hoc committee, we had not only members from our business community, we also had citizens, staff, and members of council participate as well. So I just, I want to say thank you because all of that hard work and effort led us to where we are here today.
Now, it might be, just to clarify for the record, the ad hoc committee being referred to is the one for the sign code when we updated it about two years ago. And downtown was a major focus of that discussion. And that's one of the primary reasons the ad hoc committee was put together, was talk about downtown signage and how we can assist businesses and property owners in that area. So, thank you all.
I have a question.
Go ahead, councilmember.
The sign out on 287, I think it would be better placed, it were placed before Adamsville Road. Because we have a lot of people who turn on Adamsville, you know, to go to the winery and they're out on C.
That would be, excuse me, Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, that would be a location, potential location for a kiosk sign where they could have a specific business name. And so we'll be, you know, as we work through on the location on the kiosk signs, that would be one of the locations we'd like to look at.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember.
I just had one more question on that note. When we were looking at the sign placements before that you had already marked on the map, I noticed that they didn't go very far north. And something that I've always wanted in the town of Florence was something that sort of welcomed. I know we have talked about, I know John had mentioned many times this digital kiosk sign that he wants or digital signage that he wants as an entrance point. But what's the prospect of putting some type of signage a little bit further north on our boundary?
That, excuse me, Mayor, Councilmember Rodriguez, that would be something, would be kind of a different conversation, but you're talking about Pond Highway and possibly 79. But that 79 would be an ADOT issue, of course. That's something we could talk about internally as far as like a welcome to Florence monumentation with some kind of a digital display on it. Definitely worthy of discussion.
Just figured while we're having the sign discussion, it'd be a good point to bring it up now.
All right.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Our next presentation this evening is an update on the rodeo grounds by Town Manager Brent Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'll try to be brief. A few weeks ago, we had a council work session with respect to the rodeo grounds and the future of the rodeo grounds. And staff received direction at that meeting to try and get a better handle of the water solution or potential water solutions at the rodeo grounds and an idea of cost. We've put a lot of time and effort into that process and have provided a report for you to review that kind of encapsulates that future water solution discussion. The first step in that process is a requirement from the Arizona Department of Water, ADWR, with respect to what they call a well spacing study. We originally believed that that well spacing study was going to be quite expensive. We went and asked for some proposals with respect to that work and have found that that work can be completed for around $5,000. So we've decided to move forward with a consultant to put together that work and it'll be completed in the next few weeks. That'll give us a better idea of how we can create a separate area, separate service area with respect to drilling a well. It won't able to be a replacement well under the state standards. We'll have to create a new service area. I'm here tonight to just kind of give you an update with respect to that. The second phase, if we get a favorable result on the well spacing study, is to actually move forward with engineering design and permitting through the state to drill a new well. And so we've provided you with some estimates with respect to that. And then thirdly, to move forward in terms of creation of this separate water service area to drill a well, provide treatment and storage at that location. All in, we anticipate about $1.3 million to complete that project. During the course of this discussion and this research, we got a request from a council member to provide an idea of what the timing of that project, if we decide to move forward with it, would look like. And so in addition, we provided a draft project schedule. That draft project schedule is a minimum project schedule, dependent upon the various steps. As kind of a bonus, we've provided an idea of what it would cost to construct a new rodeo grounds if we chose not to move forward with the water solution as proposed at the site. And I actually put together a conceptual cost estimate with respect to constructing a new rodeo grounds at a virgin site, at a new site. And with, you know, using some levity there in terms of that number, a new rodeo grounds would likely cost around $5.5 million. And that doesn't focus on acquiring a piece of property. Or one of the things that was discussed with council before was providing RV hookups in an RV park. That is just a functional rodeo grounds. And I tried to closely mirror the three phases of potential project that Hezekiah provided at that previous work session in terms of the future of the rodeo grounds at the existing site. So I hope that this is sufficient for the information that council wanted with respect to this. At this time, staff feels that the water solution at the existing site, utilizing that existing site and the improvements that are already there is a more economical solution than providing a new rodeo grounds. But I would open that up to discussion and questions.
Thank you very much for that comprehensive overview. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Am I on? Okay. I have several concerns. One, you know, the cost of nearly a million dollars for a well, or 1.3 as you said. And, you know, the cost to build a new rodeo ground is also a concern. I think that the existing rodeo ground compared to what we're proposing for a new rodeo ground to be is, you know, so much different because what you're proposing is quite a nice rodeo ground. You know, two arenas, practice fields, a lot of stuff extra. If you take that out and you can cut that 5.5 million down to a couple million and we don't have to put in a well. So, you know, if I look at the trade-off, I think we could build a new rodeo ground for, you know, a net of two or three million dollars. We don't have to pay a million dollars to put a well on land that we don't own. Now, I just have a problem with us spending that much money on a well to go in where we don't have any control over that, you know. We don't know what the federal government's going to do. They may kick us off. We know how peculiar they are sometimes. The next administration may change. So I don't like the idea of staying where we are. I think we'd be better off of buying new land if we want to stay with the federal land. Because we don't want to buy land, the other idea is we could put it in out at Poston Butte on the federal land out there. So I would like to see us come back with more details and more options for us to look at.
Vice Mayor.
I guess for me, I feel like we're not comparing apples and apples here. You've got a big old grapefruit and an apple. So. Um, I guess for me, I feel like we're not comparing apples and apples here. You're, you've got a big old grapefruit and an apple. So, my concern is, I agree with, uh, councilmember Anderson, I'm concerned at spending that type of money on land that will never belong to us. And, you know, recently, the racetrack over off of Ironwood, who is also on, um, government provided lease, had their lease taken from them with no knowledge. They thought they were gonna be there forever, but with the housing boom, best and, best use of land is to sell it for housing. And so we don't know what's gonna happen over here. And so that concerns me that they can renew that, or take that lease back at any time they want. They could do it mid-project. And then what do we do? We're out, we're out this money. So I guess I would want to know that if for any reason they took, they decided to not renew our lease, what compensation would we get for the improvement that we've made to the land that made it more sellable? My, um, other thing is that you're giving us what the well is gonna cost us, but none of the improvements that also need to be made. Um, oh, that's our ghost visiting us. Okay, I'll shorten it up. Um, there's a lot of improvements that have to, not can be, but have to be made to that site. And we don't see those numbers here, which would help us balance out the cost of a new one versus the cost of what the current one is. I know we've thrown numbers around, but I would really like to see them so that we could put them next to each other and say, okay, this one doesn't require a well. We don't know until we go to look at land if it's gonna require anything like that. But this one's five point five million. This one right now is one point three million. Once we do all the upgrades, we might be looking only at three million, or we might be looking at six million or more. We don't really know until we put all the numbers down. So I would ask that if we could get some more comparison of the two projects, because right now we've got a well and then we've got a full facility that based on what I'm reading, looks like Queen Creek's facility. Um, you know, to the extent of it's gonna be something that, I, I know they need those things in order to have a functionable rodeo ground. I, I, that is where I disagree with, um, councilmember Anderson. You need those things if you're gonna have a rodeo ground that is, um, that people want to come to and hold events at, you need all that stuff. But I just need to know how the, how the two would compare better. Does that make sense?
Sure, I think I can help with some of that. First off, we have a BLM patent on this land. So it's, it's not like the state land where the racetrack was, where they had a short-term lease on it. We have the patent, as long as we follow the patent on this land, the chances of the federal government taking it from us are very, very, very slim. Uh, like I say, we have the patent, it's essentially been gifted to us with, uh, the, the, the various regulations that are required, including it be a recreational, uh, and equestrian use. Uh, but keep in mind, it also provides some limitations in terms of the inability to use a for-profit, uh, entity to run that rodeo grounds. It would have to be a nonprofit. In terms of the side-by-side comparison, uh, what I tried to do when I put together this estimate, these are real numbers based on real projects that have, that have happened in the Western United States and from the people that we've talked to. So I feel good about the numbers that have been provided. And Hezekiah provided numbers, uh, for upgrades at the existing facilities that would be comparable with this estimate. We already have an existing arena, we already have a practice arena. Uh, uh, councilman Anderson brought forward that we would be providing a new arena and a practice arena. There's already a practice arena at the existing rodeo grounds. Hezekiah's numbers included a second competition arena that would be a roping arena. Uh, and that's been provided. I just didn't provide Hezekiah's numbers tonight. Uh, it already has an announcer stand, bathrooms, concession stand. Those are in the new one. They already exist at the existing rodeo grounds. Some of the ancillary things that you see in that, uh, is a paved parking lot. I don't believe Hezekiah's numbers provided a new, uh, uh, and Hezekiah's gone, oh, there he is. I don't believe Hezekiah's estimate provided, uh, a paved parking lot. But if we build a new facility, it's going to have to satisfy ADA, whereas the existing facility is grandfathered. Uh, the sidewalks and the concrete work wouldn't be required at the old rodeo grounds because it's grandfathered for its use, uh, over time. So, but those are very small numbers, uh, in, in the grand scheme of things, in, in terms of the apples-to-apples comparison. It certainly wouldn't take it from five point five million to two million or three million, uh, because the very large numbers are the things that were already provided by, by Hezekiah in, in terms of his numbers. But we can certainly do that uh, on a side-by-side basis. Keep in mind that when we acquire a new facility, a new, uh, area, if we have to purchase that land or use pre-existing land that, that the town has, um, I'm also not talking about the improvements to roads and access that we require for the new site. Uh, I'm also not speaking to the, the acquisition it costs itself, or the provision of water and sewer. Uh, councilman Anderson brought up the site adjacent to, to Post and Butte. Keep in mind that there's no utilities there, uh, and it's gonna be a sizable run to, to run water and sewer to that Post and Butte, uh, area and that complex as it stands now. In our val- value engineering for Post and Butte, we're, we're not gonna have a hook to a municipal sewer system. It's gonna be an onsite treatment facility, uh, at, at that facility. So the one point two million, when you look at it in an apples-to-apples way, the utilities are probably gonna approach the one point three million that we're gonna talk about with, with the new well to provide those improvements to a site like that, uh, and to have significant capacity in order to, to provide those things. The other issue that you have with Post and Butte is there currently isn't a water service or a sewer, a sewer service at that site. So that sewer treatment plant would have to be built, uh, and the water well, storage, et cetera, would have to be built at that site, which would be significantly more than one point three million.
I'm not really suggesting that we do the post of you, I was just saying that was an option. I'd rather see us buy private land that we own, we have total rights on to do what we want to on. That we don't have to get approval from, uh, the federal government if we want to have a, a car show, or we want to have a music festival. If we want to have some other type of entertainment venue. You know, if we're gonna spend this kind of money, I'd like to see this be, be a multi-use facility.
I thought my mic was on. It would also, if we went the direction that councilmember Anderson is, um, suggesting, we would remove that restraint of not being able to have a for-profit partner with us in it. But when you talk about the current rodeo grounds, and yes, those things are there, but they are all in despair. They all need major improvements done to them. So at some point, major improvements, you might as well just tear it down and rebuild it. So that's why I'm saying, I get that those things are there, but they're not in the best condition. Um, there are a lot of safety hazards that are there. So there's a big picture that has a lot of little parts, but we need to at least be able to compare the two ideas, whether we're out buying someone's private land and, or we're going over to Post and Butte, wherever, just so that we have a better idea of why we should go with one direction versus the other. Cause right now, you look at this and it's like, well, of course we want to stay where we're at because it's only gonna cost us one point three million. No, it's gonna cost us more than that. We all know that. But based on this, this would be a platform to say, well, we don't want a new one because that's too much money. Let's go with the, the cheaper version. I want to be able to see on paper that this is the best decision for us, or this is the best decision for us. Because this is a very hot topic for everybody. A lot of people don't want to see that rodeo grounds moved. And so before we make the decision, I want to make sure all of us are very informed and very aware of the decision that we're gonna make.
Vice Mayor, it'll be very easy for me to take Hezekiah's numbers that were previously presented at the work session, side-by-side with this and, and, uh, I either provide that to you via email or at a separate council meeting. Uh, I just wanted to give you an update and see whether you wanted us to con- continue forward on the water solution, uh, or whether you wanted us to start a, uh, site selection analysis to build rodeo, new rodeo grounds. Uh, this is information only, but that's why I came tonight was so that, uh, you guys had an understanding of, of where we're at. I said we'd come back and present the information. We're confident in the numbers and the timeframe now. Uh, and so that's, that's what we're providing this evening.
I'd like to, I mean, just because we presented these numbers to the public, I feel that any comparison needs to present, be presented to the public so that they are aware as well of what we're looking at.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, I was just gonna echo, I mean, a lot of this thing stuff has already been covered that I was gonna say. Um, but I'd also like us in this analysis to look into other partnership opportunities if we were to acquire other land. Obviously with it, with it being, being a BLM land, we wouldn't be able to have those public, or those, uh, those other partnerships out there. But if we were to acquire them, what opportunities would there be also? Is there any grants available? Is there any other funding sources that we could look at besides just self-funding? Um, so I guess to me, I, I would like to have it publicly displayed, a comprehensive plan that would give us a full analysis of both options, including what partnerships opportunities there might be.
I agree. And just also restating, again, in this budget year, just so our public is aware, we're not moving forward with anything fiscally at this time. We're simply identifying the issues, making a plan to move forward. And we want input not only from our citizens and community, but all of the experts in this field as well. This is a very, you know, a hot button topic because of the rich history that the rodeo has in our community. And I just want to reaffirm that the rodeos that we had previously discussed will be moving forward this year as planned.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so two answers to those questions. Number one, uh, yes, staff has been specifically Alon and, and Hezekiah have been reaching out to a whole list of individuals, both locally and externally, to answer a, a bunch of questions and, and get input, uh, from them in terms of the rodeo grounds, what the needs are, how to run it, different options, costs for improvements, different models that are out there. They've been doing that for about two months. Uh, I think since the work session, and they do that on a weekly basis and report back to me. Uh, secondarily, yes, we are working and planning with folks to make sure that the events identified, uh, by council that are historic events, that, that those continue to go forward without a hitch going forward. I just want one piece of clarification, because I know I'm gonna get calls and, and I want to be able to answer correctly. I hear council asking for two things. One, to bring back a side-by-side comparison between a new site and the existing site that's more apples-to-apples, arenas-to-arenas, announcer stands-to-announcer stands in terms of dollars, and bring that back and present that to council. But I also heard, uh, councilmember Rodriguez say, and the mayor agree, that you want staff to come back, uh, with, with, uh, an, uh, further analysis on partnerships regarding those costs, grants and fundings. And, and that would lead me, lead me to believe back to you want a site, uh, selection analysis and some kind of documentation on options for alternate sites. I just wanted to make sure I get that right. Cause that'll take some time.
I guess I should clarify. I feel like, uh, when I look at other communities that have these equestrian sites, they often have partnerships with maybe large dealerships or with, um, they're sponsored by certain rodeo, by other rodeo facilities. They're, I don't know, I guess I'm not really well-versed in that. Um, corporations, yeah. So, um, I know Alon works very closely with a lot of these other corporations, maybe not even locally, maybe they are. That'd be great. That'd be fantastic. Don't get me wrong. But maybe some larger corporations would have an interest in sponsoring some things like this where they're also using it as a promotional venue. And as, uh, councilmember Anderson also suggested, is maybe this could be more of a multi-use facility where, and I'm just brainstorming ideas, but this is something where we would have another opportunity to, um, both promote, help a business promote locally, um, where they could be a partner in the facility. So I just would, and it isn't a site selection analysis. This is just simply identifying what there might be out there, or maybe what other places have received by their partnerships. That's more of maybe the direction I was going to help that clarifies.
That helps. I think that's very doable.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much. Item number seven is our consent agenda. Before going through and reading the consent agenda, I am gonna go ahead and pull item A because I wanna just talk about that. So other than that, all items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item B is to enter into a professional services contract with S.J. Anderson Company for repairs made to the senior center in Bruin Camp Building in an amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars. Item C is approval of the April fifth and April nineteenth town council meeting minutes. Item D is to receive and file the following boards and commission minutes. March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, Historic District Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes. And March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like any other item removed? Seeing no such moved, I need a motion.
A motion, we approve the consent agenda with the removal of item A.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose same side. And that motion carries. Item A is approval to enter into a contract with the International Board of Credentialing and Continuing Education Standards for Autism Certification Training for Town Staff in an amount not to exceed five thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. As you're coming up, I just wanted to say, there's many moving parts and wonderful people in working towards Florence, Arizona, becoming autism certified. I'd like to give special thanks to Amy Canet, who's a local business owner of the Old West Homebrew Saloon, and Roger Beatty, who is the director of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, as well as a local Florence Unified School District School Board Member. As an educator and a mayor, I understand the positive impact this will have on our community, both for residents and our visitors. In talking with Mayor Giles of Mesa, Arizona, they were the first community to become, um, autism certified. And this brought national recognition. This is going to have such a positive impact on our community, both in hospitality, to job opportunities, providing services and an overall quality of life. So I, I wanted to have you come up in case anybody has any questions about it, but really more so just to give thanks for everybody who has been bringing this forward and really taking, taking it by the horns and, and going with it.
Well, Mayor, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Um, I've been working closely with Roger Beatty and with, uh, the IBCCES and members of three of our departments, our department heads, um, to ensure that the city's doing, or the town is doing its part to assist the chamber in getting the town of Florence autism certified. So, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
I, I have a question. Uh, can the town council members be certified?
There are individual certifications that can be had, and absolutely the town council members can go through those certifications.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Would we be able to get a presentation of what the, what the certification entails? Or just so that everybody kinda has an idea of how staff is being trained? Like what are they looking for? What are they learning?
So, uh, the general answer, that would be yes. I, I, we could come back and do a, uh, have a presentation done to explain what the individual components might look like. There are trainings that, uh, will vary, uh, depending on department directorship, um, involvement with members within the community. So, um, fire and safety, police will have a different training than those that are in community, community services. Um, so there is a wide variety there. The training will be had through, um, video presentation and online. Uh, that all staff will go through that, uh, in that manner. But would be happy to come back and, and explain further on each of those different roles.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you, Alon, for his, his participation in this, because he's been very active with Roger and the chamber. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if I might, Mayor, I, I just wanna, um, add the kudos to Roger Beatty and the chamber for bringing this forth. I think it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity for the town to be engaged and to show support for the members of our community that are disadvantaged in different ways. So, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we need a motion.
A motion, we approve consent agenda, item A.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that motion carries. Item nine A, no, item eight A is new business. Discussion approval disapproval to allow all Florence Unified School District Schools within the town of Florence municipal boundary to have an year-end party at no charge. And this was placed on the agenda by councilmember Anderson.
Yes, I did this, uh, just to get recognition. You know, the town has been doing this and we've been cooperating with the schools, allowing them to have. allowing them to have pool parties. But I thought it would be nice if we formalized it just so people in the town know that this is going on and that the town is providing the services free to the school district.
Excellent. Any questions? Councilmember Rodriguez. Go ahead.
I just have a comment. I think this is a great idea, and I think it's good that we're going to put it official. And I would love to see the town and our school district partner more, whether it's a all-campus prom on Main Street every year. I, that was the neatest thing, and it sounded like all the kids had such a great time. And I mean, when I think about what it takes us to shut down Main Street versus what they're spending to go have prom at, you know, Fat City or Fat Cats or whatever it's called, it's a significant amount that is coming out of these kids' pockets. And prom on Main Street is a beautiful event. And I think any event that our school district wants to hold in our town, we should accept it with open arms and do all that we can for them so that way we can keep our hometown spirit alive. But yeah, it's a great idea. I love it.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Oh, I was just waiting to make a motion. I'm ready to go.
Oh.
I'm ready to go.
I'm so not ready. You had like, you're ready to go, and that's why I called on you before her. I was going to suggest adding one more thing, because in the past, we've also opened this up to our Town of Florence Little League. And also on item A, it has all Florence Unified School District schools within the Town of Florence municipal boundary. I'd like to see this opened to all of the schools in our municipal boundary. And I know that in the past, we've had designated days for, you know, the schools to come down to the Aquatic Center. And Hezekiah has been amazing, as well as his staff. It really helps them as well as they're going through. And, you know, they're training, they have their lifeguard, you know, training. And before the season officially opens, they have this opportunity to, you know, have large crowds. And it, it gives an opportunity to tweak things for the upcoming season under that close supervision with a small structured group. So I would like to suggest adding in, I know at this point, we only have American Leadership Academy as well as Florence Unified School District within our municipal boundaries. But also our Florence Little League, we've done that pool party for several years as well. And, you know, for adding it in to make it official, I just think that that should be in there as well.
Florence Sports? I like that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So how would you like that read, Lisa?
If you say so moved, we'll make it happen.
So moved.
We have a motion. Oh, Mr. Allen, before we...
Got to be quicker.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, just for clarification for staff. So those individual organizations that you listed off, if they approach the town and want to host an outdoor aquatic pool party prior to the season, council's saying that you'll cover that out of your contingency funds?
Yes.
Each one of those groups?
Please be very careful with the wording, because your contingency balances, and we're spending more and more every day. So I don't think you're saying that if an individual comes and requests a pool party, you're saying that if Little League has one pool party and everyone is invited, is that not what you're saying?
Yes.
And then you're saying that you want the pool opened for a end-of-year party where the school can attend for free?
I would like to see that one pool party be all students.
Of all schools.
Of all schools, so that way that also gives them opportunity, especially since we are very much a combined community. I mean, a lot of our students, even as they started ALA, end up at, or ever at Florence High. So I'd like to see this one Florence pool party, as long as capacity.
You may want to separate it, just from an educator standpoint. You may want to separate it by grades, like a K-5, 612. So that way the big kids and the little kids don't.
It'd be like a three-day, three separate dates. Because I mean, Anthem K-8 has, I think, almost 1,000 students alone. I don't know what your capacity is.
That's what I'm saying, what's capacity? And how often are these well-attended?
So, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, just for clarification. So if Little League approaches us, you're saying there could be a pool party by Little League that council would cover through contingency funds? If the Anthem School approaches us and says they want a pool party before the pool opens, council will cover it through contingency funds. That's...
So I believe our conversation evolved a little since our first original motion that was read into record. So I'm just going to make a few clarifications based upon feedback that was heard. So if we opened it up to all of the schools within our municipal boundary and said, listen, on this day, if you are a K-5 student, you're welcome at the Florence Community Center for a pool party. Now, if you want, you could also separate it out in time slots, because I know that, you know, most part, you're only going to go to the pool for two to three hours. So you could say, K through five, your time slot is going to be here. Six through 12, your time slot is going to be here, so it would fall all within one day. And for, you know, Florence Little League, I also heard council say, well, what about other organizations? I'm aware, you know, Paladin also is a sports organization in our community. So to say, you know, on this day, we're opening it up to our youth sports in the community, here's our capacity that we can hold. So first come, first serve into the, into the building. Or we could say, in the morning, we'll have, you know, X amount of slots open. And in the afternoon, we'll have X amount of slots open, and then we can have a sign up.
Well, it's my understanding that the K-8 schools have been doing this for several years, and we don't charge them for it, and the principals coordinated.
So Anthem typically goes to the Parkside Community Center, and Florence K-8 comes over to our community center.
No, Anthem, Anthem.
Unless they switched recently. But when I taught there, that's...
Yeah, it's, the community center does not allow Anthem to use it because of the non-residents. Yeah, it's, that's a real sore point, so, yeah.
And so, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, so from my understanding, this is the first year that we're being requested for this from Anthem, and it's outside of the regular pool season.
Okay.
And so why, which is why we pulled the fee structure from the facilities use agreement that council just authorized. But if council would like and pull that out of their contingency, we can go that route as well. We're just asking for additional clarification.
We can, I believe we have funds in this year's budget. I'm not sure if it falls within our contingency, but perhaps Ms. Garcia could help give us some guidance.
I would be happy to. There were no financial information included in the agenda items, so that's why I'm just cautious and want to make sure that we have the funding available and that it's going to be all expended in June 30th, 2000, by June 30th, 2021. And so I will definitely work with the Community Services Director, and we'll come back and we'll make sure that we're fitting it in with the contingencies.
And it would include entry-only, so the different organizations, the school district or the sports program would be required to bring their own, provide their own food?
Yes. What I heard the Community Services Director say is that it's outside of his scope of services. So I wouldn't expect that the Community Services Department would charge council to cover the cost that they were letting for free. I believe what they're asking for council to cover the costs are would be the life costs, because it's outside the season.
Madam Mayor, I have a suggestion for the council member that made the motion so that they can amend their motion. I would suggest that in addition to the language that's been provided with respect to all schools that are within the Town of Florence and sports organizations that are within the Town of Florence, that they specifically say will set aside two days to be divided in whatever age group or Paladin versus town and Little League sports programs, but to be divided on time slots within those two days and to be funded by council contingency. That way, we tie it down to two days.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, I'd like to...
Wait, wait, wait. Councilmember Mendoza.
Sorry. I think originally, the conversation came up because of the monies that we gave to the high. Normally Anthem, they go over to the pool that's in Mesa, the...
Sunsplash Golf Land.
Yeah, they do all that. I was almost thinking more on the lines of maybe giving them some money at the end of the year for their eighth-grade outing that they have. And I know that this year Anthem is going to our community pool here, I believe on Wednesday or Thursday. And Florence K-8, they're actually doing a dance. So if we could fund those items, I think that would be a better thing to do, because they already have something set up. And going forward, I also believe that, you know, they usually do their, whatever they're going to do for their graduation ceremony for the kids. So if we were to, I don't know, maybe offer $500 for each school, then maybe that would help them achieve their goal. The kids won't have to pay as much to get to those events.
Thank you.
That's a lot of schools.
Yeah.
That's a lot of schools. If we're, if we're putting it up to all schools within our Florence boundaries and our, well, no, because that wouldn't include the schools in Santa. I think that we, I love that idea. I love by supporting what they're doing, but I feel like that's, right now, this is, it's sort of like when you go to a line and you've got six kids, and you have to feed all six kids, you pick one meal, because we're getting, we're getting too much into these other things. And so, I mean, I don't know if there's other opportunities, if we'd rather table this item, or if we guys would want to move forward with it. But I feel like we have to sort of narrow down exactly what we're doing before we sort of move forward. And I'm going to leave that, you guys, I'm, yeah, I'm going to leave that up to you guys. I guess I can, I like the idea of being able to say, hey, if you want to use our pool, fantastic. We're going to give you, we're going to provide you with two specific days where we can divide it as staff sees directed, however they see fit, so that you guys get an opportunity to use the pool and celebrate the end of the year. So if they still want to do those other things, that's great. And maybe in the future, we could go that direction. I just don't know if that's something that would be in the scope.
Well, I agree with that. I mean, this year, I mean, it's short notice, I mean, school's almost over. So, you know, just opening up the pool for them this year would be one thing. The other item that I was talking about, maybe we can do at a future date. So when we do, if we approve another funding for Florence High School, we can also include some of the eighth-grade graduation ceremonies that they're doing.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to table this motion.
So two things before we get a second on that. One, I was going to make a statement of Councilmember Mendoza. I agree, and I think that definitely we can have either a future discussion on an agenda, talking about that prior to our final budget, to see what we can work in and how that looks. And then the second was in regarding the pool party and opening it up to the schools and the organizations. If we table it, I don't think it will be able to happen this year. So I just, you know, before we move forward with that, I just want that to be something that is considered. And then the third idea that I just wanted to put out that we can discuss at a future session is, you know, this is also an idea, an opportunity for our council and our community to come together that I've seen in other communities where we have, you know, like a pancake breakfast, where our community comes through, you have a pancake breakfast. We, as council, serve them, they give tips or donations, and then we could in turn take that and give it to a local organization or a school. So that way, you know, we're continuing that circle of community and contributing. So that being said...
Madam Mayor, in terms of Robert's rules.
Yes.
You have a motion and a second on the floor.
We have a motion.
Don't have a second.
Oh, I thought you had a second to Ms. Rodriguez's motion.
She, oh, you made a motion?
She made a motion, she got a second.
We didn't hear that. We thought she was just suggesting this is the floor, and then it started.
Yes, you are correct. Thank you for backtracking.
Since you have a motion and a second, it's now Councilmember Rodriguez's floor if she wants to amend her motion.
Yes.
Then Councilman Anderson made a motion to table. It hasn't received a second yet, but if it does get a second, after Councilman Rodriguez amends her motion, if it does get a second, you have to vote on the table first before you can go back to Councilman Rodriguez's motion. I'm just trying to help.
If she motions to table, does that?
No.
Cut out the second one?
No, so we go to you. So I am going to make a motion, I'm going to amend my motion to, how do I want to word this? Hold on, let's state it. That we will host two pool days for the FU, Florence...
All schools in our municipal...
All schools in our municipal boundaries and local, local Town of Florence.
Local youth sports.
Your local youth sports, okay. I'm looking at you too, Lisa. And for two days, as directed by staff, to be divided between those two organizations.
Sounds like Anthem K-8 has already made a deal.
And a future work session. And a future work session to discuss Johnny Mendoza's idea regarding future youth participation for end-of-year programming.
So now we have to check and see if the individual that made the second allows their second on the amended motion. I don't remember who made the second.
I thought you kind of stopped before we made a second.
Oh, I heard a second.
Oh, shoot. Lord have mercy. You know what? I'm going to second whatever she just said, because I know it included everything, right? Yep.
Now, Mayor, you ask Councilman, you ask if there's a second to Councilman Anderson's motion to table.
I second Councilmember Anderson's motion to table.
Then you vote on Councilman Anderson's motion first.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? All in favor of tabling this agenda item? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. Nay.
Roll call, Lisa?
What?
Lord.
I'm sorry, I've got a question.
Yes.
So are we tabling what Johnny's saying?
No, it would be everything.
The whole thing?
Yeah. It would be everything.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the school stuff is already good to go?
But they could still... They, the school does not already have their stuff good to go, but the, the opportunity to be able to either have it prior to the end of their school year or just after and have the children gather.
And that's just something the school needs to communicate with the pool?
Yes.
Oh, I think we complicated this way too.
We did.
We, it's just a free swim day.
Well, according to Robert's Rules of Orders, we need a roll call, but first I'm going to have Hezekiah Allen speak.
So, Madam Mayor, Council, I believe Councilman Anderson asked for this to be on the agenda in reference to the Anthem Pool Party before the season, which was the impetus behind this item being presented to council. So to answer your question, no, that hasn't been approved, because we, we probably backed to the Anthem School with our fee structure based on the shared facilities agreement with FUSD.
However, if we do approve it, they are able to facilitate one prior to the end of the year, is my understanding.
Yes. Roll call vote?
Just to clarify, this is to table the entire motion, just so it's clear.
The motion on the floor.
No, if we vote on his, then hers dies.
Okay, that's what I asked, and you guys all told me no. I said if we, if she amended, or if we vote on his, it ends the whole conversation.
No.
Okay.
So what you're voting on by a roll call vote as designated by the mayor is that if you vote yes, you will be tabling this item. And it will not be tabled to a date certain. It'll be tabled, which is removing from the table.
Well, if we vote to table it, does that mean?
Anthem can't.
Anthem cannot have their pool party?
Correct.
Correct.
Well, they can still have it, they just have to pay for it.
They have to pay for it.
Are you ready? A vote of yes will mean that the item is tabled.
We at Florence K-8, when we do ours, we walk the students down here for a certain amount of time. for a certain amount of times, we walk the students back, bring the next set of students. I think we need to focus on that and let the schools do that, cuz we brought our own drinks and our own little snacks, and they just got the free swim day.
Yes.
And I think we need to say yes to that and leave it.
I think that's what we're trying to do.
I'm hoping that's what we're trying to do. I'm just trying to put this in regular old language.
All right.
Table motion, let's get it.
So we have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion to table, so we're gonna start with Councilmember Anderson.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Cordes.
Nay.
Councilmember Neil.
Nay.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Nay.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Nay.
Mayor Walter.
Nay, 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 all day.
Motion failed. Now you go back to your main motion. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. B is Resolution Number seventeen eighty-two twenty-one. Discussion, Approval, Disapproval. A resolution of the Town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, amending the Town of Florence budget and fiscal policies and declaring it to be public record and to rescind Resolution Number twelve sixty-two ten and Resolution Number twelve sixty-three ten. Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Town Council. We're here tonight to present uh revisions to the existing fiscal budget and um po- policies that we have. Uh, as you can see, they were adopted in 2010, and that's quite a ways back. But to tell you the truth, uh, finance and accounting does not change very much. So they're normally, you know, consistent about what we do. There's not much change or upheaval. But there were some sections in here that we needed to modify. One of them was to eliminate some of the revenue sources that are no longer available to us. The other one was to update our um uh, investment policy to be more flexible with what we're doing right now. The other thing was to uh make, ensure that uh what we're doing is applicable to audits, et cetera. So we had our auditor take a look at this also. We also made it more flexible for uh us to use our one-time revenues. It was very restrictive be- before. So uh, we put in that um little bit of flexibility so that everyone's aware that this is what we do, their general budget fiscal policies. So uh, given that, we're asking that you approve this or adopt this policy tonight.
Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding this policy and the rescinding? Seeing no such move, we need a motion?
Oh, you guys are gonna make me push it. Okay, I make a motion to approve Resolution uh Number one seven eight two dash two one.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? And that motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item C is Discussion, Approval, Disapproval to Enter Into a Contract with Matrix New World Engineering Land Surveying and Landscape A for Groundwater Protection Well in an Amount Not to Exceed $100,000. Mr. Chris Alice.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Um, tonight's item is to assist us with creating the specifications for the well development of Well Five. As everybody should know, at this point, we've had nitrate issues over the last few years. We decommissioned that well essentially a year half, a year and a half ago. And we would like to get that well back on site within that area that the town owns. So we would like to do some additional exploration and create a test bore and then do zonal sampling and have a report to create a future well at the Wells Five site.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from council? All right, with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we enter into a contract with Matrix New World Engineering Land Surveying and Landscaping for a groundwater production well in an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Second.
Motion and multiple seconds, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item D is Discussion, Approval, Disapproval to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Agreement JPA IGA twelve five forty-one AG Contract Number P zero zero one two zero one two zero zero one eight five seven. Amendment Number Two with the Arizona Department of Transportation for purpose of design, right-of-way acquisition and construction of a roundabout at State two eighty-seven and State Route seventy-nine B. Again, Mr. Chris Alice.
Good evening. Uh, kind of fortuitous that ADOT walked us through the projects that are coming forth, including this particular project. This agreement was approved by council, I believe, in two thousand and eighteen. Um, this outlines essentially the funding between the town and ADOT on this project. Essentially, the money that we've been getting through MAG does not actually come to the town. It goes straight to ADOT, and they're able to expend those funds. So as this is um described, this is for the purpose, purpose of design, right-of-way acquisition, and then the final construction. Not necessarily part of this, but the town will be pursuing ADOT closeout funds at the end of this year for the construction of the remaining portion of this project. So as described in the budget, meaning that we had, I believe it's about 1.45 million that was in the budget. And we will be applying for all those minus the, the funding match for that, which is, I believe, zero point, 5.7%. So.
Excellent, thank you. Council, any questions or comments? Seeing no such move, we need a motion.
I motion that we approve to enter into an intergovernmental agreement JPA IGA one two dash five four one.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Nay. Motion carries. Item E is Discussion, Approval, Disapproval of the Purchase and Installation Service Contract with CCS Presentation Systems for Council Chambers Audio Video Upgrade in an Amount Not to Exceed $154,671.41. Mr. Trenton Schaefer. He will be joining us virtually right now.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. Um, this is for the purchase and installation for the council, uh, audio video upgrade uh previously brought to council, I believe, was at the April fifth meeting. Um, we went out for RFP. Um, we received uh, a lot of interested parties, but only one uh proposal from CCS Presentation Systems. Uh, after reviewing the proposal, uh, we decided to uh go ahead and move forward. We liked what we saw. Um, I have their uh, uh, sales manager, Brandon Hall, uh, joining us as well, if, if council has any questions. Um, and I'll leave it at that.
Does that mean our citizens will be able to hear us in real time, clearly?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the uh, the system proposed by CCS uh is uh, is a very modernized, very up-to-date system that meets uh current standards. Uh, all, all new microphones, uh, voting mechanism, uh, proper council timer at the podium, uh, chair control, all the bells and whistles. So uh, speech intelligibility should be uh, should be very pleasant, so it should be good.
All right. Council, any questions or comments?
Does that include the acoustics in here?
Uh, this uh actual proposal did not include the uh acoustic panel treatments uh due to the uh, the budget that, that was uh available. Um, CCS uh was unable to provide the acoustic treatment uh to the council chambers, but we're confident uh with a mixed-minus system with the speakers that they're bringing in, that uh speech intelligibility wouldn't be an issue. Uh, so for now, no, it does not include that.
Does it come with a?
Go ahead.
Does it come with a guarantee that it will work?
Well, I'll leave that to Brandon Hall.
Uh, we are very confident that the system is gonna work for you, yes.
All right, we're holding you to that. Council, any questions or comments?
Is this just for audio or is it audio and visual?
Yes, because there's, there's been times where our public will reach out and say, hey, there's no audio, we can't hear you, what's going on? And then as a result, it decreases our engagement in the community because they can't hear properly.
Yeah, I get that all the time, but I'm just, it's not, this is not visual.
Yes.
It's visual also.
Uh, Councilmember Neil, the uh, video system was upgraded, I wanna say in twenty seventeen. Um, so the, the actual video cameras and the video equipment uh currently present are, are up to date. They just need to be integrated with a, a newer system. Our video mixer and switcher up uh in the nest up above you, above the clock at the back of the chambers, was upgraded over the last couple of years with uh newer equipment, so um, bringing on this new system, there will be a, a new laser projector uh installed, a nine thousand lumen laser projector for the public. Um, so they'll be able to see that really bright and clear. And then for the uh video, it'll be ten eighty P high definition uh broadcast out to uh, to the public uh that attend via Zoom or and or YouTube. So it does include both components. The video component was kind of pre-existing, um, just needs to integrate it with a newer system.
Just out of curiosity, what are we currently streaming at?
So we stream, we, we stream at ten eighty P over YouTube, but we stream at seven twenty P over Zoom. And that's due to the limitation in Zoom. Um, so until they uh upgrade that, we're, we're always gonna stream seven twenty P to Zoom, which it really doesn't impact it because of the, the size of the individual gallery views. So you, you really don't know so much of a difference until it goes full screen.
This new system will allow us to not have as much feedback and echo. Um, even here in the council chamber, we have so much echo right now. Um, and when it's with the delay plus the echo, it takes a long time for anybody who is speaking online for us to hear their message um after they've already heard ours.
Yes, Councilmember Rodriguez, that is correct. Um, the existing system uh is not amplified. Uh, therefore, the gain is turned up all the way on the microphones to be able to pick anybody up, and that's why we get a lot of the feedback echo. Um, some other existing issues with cabling, antennas uh create crackling and popping in the system. So with proper wiring, proper microphones, proper speakers uh distributed through there, you'll uh, you'll be nice and, and sharp and clear.
All right. Any other questions? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Purchase and Installation Service Contract with CCS Presentation Systems for the Council Chamber, Chambers Audio Video Upgrade in an Amount Not to Exceed $154,671.46.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. Mr. Ben Bitter, thank you so much. Mr. Ben Bitter with our legislative update.
I have no update today, Mayor. Still no budget from the uh legislature.
All right, thank you. Our managers report.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I have a few things the, this evening. First, I had the opportunity prior to the meeting tonight to introduce Mr. Ron Gritman, PE uh to the council. He's our new senior civil engineer on staff in the Public Works Department. It's nice that he came down today uh to introduce himself. Uh, secondarily, staff was just notified uh that the Town of Florence's grant uh entitled Together in Florence Storywalk uh has been awarded uh by uh, for $5,000. And those funds will be utilized to develop a story walk in, in Heritage Park uh about the, the Town of Florence. The funding itself comes through the Library Services and Technology Act and the Institute of Museum and Library Services. Uh, they provide funding in all fifty states. Congratulations goes out and, and thanks goes out to the library staff and, and obviously community services and, and Jennifer uh for, for their work on that grant. Next, I was able to forward to council uh this morning uh an article where the Town of Florence uh was uh, was featured uh and it's in everyone's favorite publication, Water and Waste Digest. I was supposed to elicit a smile or a laugh, uh, but we got a sizable article uh in, in this particular magazine uh with regard to our, our AMI system, uh which is automated uh meter reading system for water and, and the basis for our smart city technology. So if you haven't had an opportunity to read that, it's, it's, it's a very nice read. Uh, the next thing I had was, uh, a question was asked a couple council meetings ago about uh potential construction uh to widen Centennial Park Avenue. Uh, I was able to receive a, a project schedule for that uh particular project uh today. And it looks like uh construction will, will likely start uh later this year, uh October, uh September, October timeframe in terms of construction of that project. And uh, lastly, I was able to send an email out to council today. Uh, when we did all of the post-inbut preserve uh work and studies with J two engineering out there on that site, the fieldwork identified an, an open shaft uh that existed on that site. Uh, we've provided some temporary fencing around that for quite some time. Uh, but as, as council found out and the public will know, we just completed uh a, a project a very, very reasonable cost, uh significantly less than the quote that we received of, of $30,000 originally. We're able to do the project for $5,000 and, and make that shaft safe. So that's my report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Any questions regarding Mr. Billingsley's report? All right, thank you. Next, we have our second call to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak at this time? Is there anybody virtually who would like to speak at this time? I see Mr. Beatty has his hand raised. Mr. Beatty, how are you this evening?
I am well, Madam Mayor, and how are you?
We are good. We actually, I'm not sure if you heard earlier, but gave you some very sincere thanks for your leadership and spearheading the endeavor of becoming an autism-certified community.
Oh, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor and all council members, that's exactly why I was sticking around to say thank you. Um, when I started this, it was a, it was kind of a labor of love, and now that I've continued and had the amount of people that have reached out, both citizens and businesses that have expressed personal stories about um, you know, their trials and tribulations. It's taken on a whole life of its own. You know, we're, we're doing the ability fair in October just to kind of add to what we're doing and the support that we're doing for these people that are that are, have these special talents. So I just wanted to thank you for participating and, and all the great things you guys said, and, and I look forward to moving forward. But have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, you as well. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? All right, I do not see any additional hands raised, so we'll go ahead and close the second call to the public. And now we have our second call to the council. Councilmember Mendoza.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the town staff. You guys have been doing an excellent job, and, and I know it's difficult to to deal with us, but I thank you guys for what you guys are doing. Um, secondly, I would like to just give a good luck to the high school seniors that are getting ready to graduate. I don't know if we'll be back here before they, they go through their graduation ceremonies, but I just wanna say good luck to them. Good luck to the ones that are joining the militaries. Good luck to the eighth graders that are leaving us and the K eights going up to the high school. Um, you guys will be missed, but we will see you at graduation. And uh, lastly, I would like to send my condolences to the Paul Turley family for um his, his passing, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Um, I just wanted to reiterate, I, I don't think I got to say thank you earlier to Megan and the Parks and Rec, I guess, uh, your team for everything that you've done with the fitness center, and I really wanted to um say thank you especially for having, embodying the spirit of thinking outside the box and um continuing to look at different ideas. You're offering services that aren't anywhere locally. You can't find that, so. Um, and obviously with us in our community and, and different varying work schedules, you're offering um something that people definitely needed. So I just wanted to say thank you again for taking those steps to, to take a leap on something that you didn't. that you didn't know if it was necessarily going to work or not, but to take that leap and to see that it works. So I'm very happy with everything that's going on over there. I also wanted to echo the same sentiments of the people that are graduate, the youth that are graduating this year and and wishing them the best on their future ventures, and hopefully they can make their way back to Florence to better help build our community and make us strong and, you know, our future business leaders and, you know, hardworking citizens. So especially why I do think the people that haven't chosen to enlist, as many of you know, I've gotten married, and when I got married, I married a man who's in the Army, he leaves again yet tomorrow. So I understand, I think, a little bit differently when you're on the side of the table than on the outside. And so I sincerely want to thank them for enlisting and for all the dedication that they're about to commit their lives to and really just wanted to say thank you again because I think it's so important to to recognize them, so.
Council member Neil.
I had a chance to talk to several different town employees, and although they were extremely happy about the stipend, a lot of them had no warning. I've been the employee that was a stipend coming down a pipe and you want to know so you can claim exempt, they had no warning and a lot of them got taxed heavily. I don't know if there's anything we can do if it does happen next time, but the town employees do such a great job, it would be something great to be able to let them know when it was going to happen. Maybe that because I've heard from several of them, they got taxed by like twenty-five hundred dollars on that. And just to be able to go exempt on that would be great, I believe, for our employees to be able to do and have that knowledge to know. I don't know if it's possible or even legal, but I think maybe the next time that we do do something like that, maybe we give them a little heads up on that. Also want to congratulate all the graduates graduates. I have two promoting from eighth grade to high school, so I have five in high school at one time, dear Jesus. Also want to send my condolences to a probably the greatest teacher I've ever had, Thelma Harmon, who lost her son, a very good friend of mine, Corin, was not even able to make it to the service, but to Thelma and her family, God bless y'all and God keep y'all, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Anderson.
Yeah, yes, I have a couple of things. Can you hear me?
You're on.
I can't tell. I attended the community services meeting this past week, and those people are so energetic, it just wears me out listening to them, you know, because they want to do so much for the town. I'm so proud to be a part of that. One of the things that they spent a lot of time about was the artwork, and they are wanting to to provide artwork in the town and come up with some kind of theme for the artwork. And they were talking about, you know, almost to the point this artwork would would be a branding thing, and I told them that the town was working on a branding logo project right now. So they decided to table their artwork theme until the branding thing has come out to see how they can integrate the branding into their artwork. The, let's see, what else? Oh, the other thing that they spent quite a bit of time on was food trucks. They want to have a food truck event, and again, they assigned, I think, three people to go out and study this. They were talking about doing food truck midday, so it would be a lunch food truck. And so they were they were going to go off and and talk to some of the the town experts on food trucks and and come up with some kind of plan. I'm pleased with that. The other thing, I may steal some of your thunder, but at the Penale Partnership, we did talk to the school board superintendent about a smokeout he wants to have in October. And so he's working with Roger to go through the paperwork to plan an event, get the licensing and so forth, to have a big smokeout event, they call it the barbecue, and the funds will be used to support the scholarships. They're expecting to make something like seventy thousand dollars, so be a great event. Oh, one last thing, I've noticed, my wife is big about watching HGTV and all the food programs, but on HGTV, we've noticed twice over the last couple of weeks, an ad for the Florence Hospital. And it's a great ad, if you haven't seen it, I don't know if we can get that and show it at a council meeting, but it's a beautiful ad, they interview several of their employees. So, you know, they're advertising Florence as well as their hospital. I think that's all the notes I have, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cordes.
John tries to steal my title, now he steals my thunder. I wasn't actually going to talk about that, but that's okay. I attended the Penale Partnership, we actually had a live event this time, and so it was nice to get back and have breakfast. It was provided by Mount Athos, so of course it was delicious. There were about a hundred people there, John?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eighty.
Eighty. I think that it was limited to seventy-five, but it ended up being a little bit more, yeah, so about eighty. It was David Cook and TJ Shoup. They talked about growth and roads and water, of course, being one of the main big issues. Representative Cook talked about trying to not trade paper anymore, but actually get real water so that we can address those issues that we're having, and the growth in Penale County, water is one of our major issues. So that was exciting to listen to, and then we did talk to them a little bit about the flat tax. And based on their opinion, they didn't see it making it through, so let's all cross our fingers and hope that comes to fruition. And council member Rodriguez got married without any of us knowing it, maybe, I'm sure Mayor Walters knew, but the rest of us didn't. So congratulations on getting married, that's a great thing. I love to see people get fall in love and get married. And other than that, just congratulations to our seniors, congratulations to our eighth graders, to our preschool kids going into kindergarten and our kindergartners going into first grade. Let's hope that this next school year is pandemic free and everybody can get back to doing what they do and enjoying life and events and getting out and seeing people that we haven't seen in forever. So other than that, just have a great week and happy summertime.
All right, now you guys are all waiting on me. I have a few things. So first, I just want to say thank you to everybody who made prom a success for our local Florence High School. There was many people at the staff level, at the community level, including our business community, that made this possible. It was truly beautiful. We actually had a news organization communicate with us, and they were wanting to put something out, but something had come up. However, this was very unique, especially during a pandemic and the town working together to assist. Some of the student body, as well as our community, said this needs to be a tradition. We need to make this happen every year on Main Street, and it really was beautiful. I mean, we had dads up on ladders putting lights across the street, and we took them down as soon as eleven o'clock came, like Cinderella, everything went back to normal. And I do, I want to say a very heartfelt thank you. Next, this week on Friday, we have Anthem K eight and Florence K eight eighth grade students will be promoting. So I want to say congratulations to our eighth grade students and, you know, when you go to high school, make sure that you get good grades, you try your best, and remember, if you have all grades, no less than a B, you can earn a full scholarship to many of our local universities. And I just want to make sure that our parents are aware because this is an amazing opportunity for your child and for you. Our high school students that are going and graduating, congratulations, you've had many years of hard work. Some of you will be going into the workforce immediately, others will be going into a trade or moving on to university or enlisting in local, not local, but military services. I want to say thank you to those who are listening and congratulations to all who are promoting. I had the opportunity and wrote a letter to all of our seniors, it's year six of that tradition, and it's something that I enjoy because I have an opportunity to impart words of wisdom. And on a personal note, this was my final class that I taught in the classroom, so they're a little extra special for me, seeing some of their names. Our local Chamber of Commerce returned back to our chamber meetings, back in person, and Rail Three hosted this past Thursday, so it was a very nice event. Going off of what council member Neil had mentioned, I also had heard and communicated with Mr. Billingsley about the tax exempt. Many of our employees have expressed gratitude and appreciation. It truly does mean a lot to them, knowing that we care about them. Now, that being said, in that paperwork, it said, you know, May twenty-eighth, it was going to hit. So again, I don't know that there's anything we can do now. However, you know, in the future, if anything like that comes up and there's that opportunity, I'd like to encourage us to stay with either what we have voted on or make sure we're communicating so that way everybody has that opportunity. I also talked to some some employees in our Parks and Recreation because they had a unique circumstance where they were furloughed because of COVID. And because they were furloughed, they didn't qualify for either the part-time or the full-time benefits that we were providing. And when I went back through and I read it, it gave the the window, but it didn't say consecutive employment. So I'd like our staff to, you know, consider taking a look at that again, and those individuals that, you know, they they've worked so many years in our town and they've given so much to our town, I'd like to make sure that they know that we appreciate them as well. And if it's something that has to be clarified by our council, if, you know, you're looking at it and you say, no, the wording says this, we have to do that, then let's get it on the next agenda so that way we can make that happen. And I wanted to close with, well, actually, I have two more things, so I'm going to save that one for a second. Our local police, on that prom night, I just, I want to say thank you so much because the kids really appreciated it. There was an officer there, and he made sure that, you know, everything went smooth and safe, and when the kiddos had their senior breakfast that following Wednesday, they had some leftover food because everybody just brought so much. And when it came time to say, hey, we have all of this extra, where should we go? First thing out of their mouth, they're like, we need to go to the police department, we need to go to the fire department, we need to go to our teachers. And so we all divvied it up and delivered it. So I just wanted you to know that they're appreciative and thankful. And last but not least, congratulations, I remember talking with Gloria, and the story walk, that grant is going to be amazing. So thank you again for being creative. That is all I have this evening. With that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn from regular meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.